Good morning, everybody. It's 10:00 a.m. on September 15, 2020. This is the meeting of Story County Board Supervisors originating from the Administration Building on providing public access via Zoom. I'm here by calling the meeting to order at 10:00 a.m. and asking if anybody wants to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Madam Chair, before we begin this meeting, I would like to note that I am concerned that we have not posted it correctly per 21.4 Public Notice of the Iowa Code in that our agenda was not posted where it was available to be seen by the public 24 hours in advance physically. And reading this as it says, "A governmental body shall give notice of the time, date, and place of each meeting," and then goes dot, 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 "in a manner reasonably calculated to apprise the public of that information." Reasonable notice shall include the news media and posting the notice on a bulletin board or other prominent place which is easily accessible to the public and clearly designated for that purpose at the principal office of the body holding the meeting, or if no such office exists, at the building in which the meeting is to be held. And the notice, the agenda was posted inside on a wall that was not accessible to the public.
Okay. I have consulted the county attorney on this, and also I asked Alyssa Wignall to go downstairs and to wait a few minutes and see if anybody was at the door wanting to come into the meeting. I'm not going to argue with you about it, but I think county attorney is looking at it, so.
No, I would like to ask the county attorney for the record, or the assistant county attorney, to provide the comment and advice that he gave to us when we first discovered the problem at an earlier meeting at 9:00 a.m. That I've been advised to do that by my personal attorney who is now on the phone. But he's not speaking here, I think he's listening. Just, I'd like our attorney to reply what he said earlier, to repeat it.
Ethan, do you want to reply now, or should we proceed with our agenda? It's up to you.
Yeah, no, I was just looking at that 21.
I hear you very well, Ethan.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at 21.4 and reading that as Loris was talking, so let me continue reading that for a minute here. And then IPib reminds us that to hold an electronic meeting, public access must be made available, provisions of 21.4 must be followed, and the place of the meeting is where the communication originates, and minutes must be kept. And then Section 21.4 provides that if 24 hours notice is impossible or impractical, provide as much notice as reasonably possible, and then state the nature of the good cause for holding a meeting without 24 hours notice must be stayed in the midst of the meeting. I would think that we could make a statement for the record that we have held these meetings since March, and we've held them the same way, and the notice has been published on our website, and in fact, we have many people participating today with no problems, and that we've checked the door to make sure no one's outside that wants to come in. And I would think we could demonstrate good cause, or we could demonstrate an intent to comply with the requirements of Chapter 21, and that I would be okay advising that you continue with the meeting this morning, subject to Loris's comment.
Thank you, Ethan. So based on advice from our civil attorney, I would continue with the meeting today and ask that anyone join us who wants to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. A statement explaining why a meeting is impossible and practical for Code 21.8.1 is because the administrative building has been closed since March 27, and we are providing public access via Zoom. I would entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved second.
Headman?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Agenda adopted. Next, we'll go to updates on COVID-19. Are there any updates from staff? Hearing, Nana O'Donoghue, are there any updates from supervisors?
I have not looked at anything the last day.
Okay. We don't have an update on numbers, but I think they did increase over the weekend. Public comment number one, this comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If there's anybody, a member of the public, who would like to make a comment now, I would ask you to, if you're on computer on Zoom, to use the raise hand function. If not, if you're on your phone, I think a star nine will unmute you. Is there anybody who would like to make a public comment? I'll open the public comment.
And they just need to unmute themselves.
Yes, please unmute yourself. Seeing no one, I don't see anybody, do you, Leanne?
No.
Okay, I'll close public comment session, and we'll go to item A, discussion and consideration of items brought before the board with request for immediate action. Are there any immediate requests? Seeing none, we go to agency reports. We have emergency management reporting reports submitted by Keith Morgan. I don't know if Keith is on the phone. I reviewed his report, I have some others have. Are there, Keith, are you available? Are you on? Did you have anything to add? I don't see Keith on the line, do you, Leanne? He's pretty busy these days.
No, I was at either one of the home lines.
Let's see, we'll see.
I didn't either, but I.
Okay.
There is a comment in his report that actually I was going to go ask the sheriff about, or someone in the sheriff's office. Is there anybody on front command, staff of the sheriff's office? Okay, never mind, I'll refer, it's just a question about storage of the dye code that was referenced in Keith's report, so never mind, we'll go on. Thank you.
Okay, I wanted to go back to. Okay, next would be consideration of minutes. We don't have minutes to look at today. I think the elders have been pretty busy with elections, so we'll go on to consideration of personnel actions. Entertain a motion for approval of personnel actions as listed.
I move so moved second.
Olson?
Aye.
Headman?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Personnel actions are approved. Next, we'll go to claims. I would entertain a motion for approval of claims as listed.
So moved second.
Headman?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Adopted. Next, we'll go to consent agenda. Is there anything to be pulled from the consent agenda?
Not for me.
And I entertain a motion for approval of the items on consent agenda as presented.
So moved second.
Olson?
Aye.
Headman?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Adopted. We'll go then to public hearing items. First consideration of ordinance, number 289, amending certain boundaries of the official zoning map. And Amelia Shonlin?
Yes, good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I've prepared, hello. I prepared a PowerPoint. It was posted in the Agenda Center as well. It's just a few slides. I was just going to briefly go through it so we could all see the property. I'll share my screen. Okay, can you all see my screen okay?
Yes. Can you talk just a little bit louder, Amelia?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Let me get closer to my phone.
Yeah, thank you. It's harder to hear.
Yeah, thanks for letting me know. So this is a rezoning. It's ordinance 289. It's a 10 net acre parcel located just west of Story City on Highway 69. It's been zoned commercial since the adoption of zoning in, excuse me, it's been zoned commercial since 1994, but when it was rezoned in 1994, it was done so to allow a seed warehouse and distribution and research facility on the property, and so it was conditioned to only allow that use. We couldn't find any records of those conditions being removed since 1994, and so the request is to essentially keep the same zoning district but remove that condition to allow Maverick Inc. to locate on the property, which does ditch which trenches, directional drills and parts, and sells reel trailers and tile locators. They plan to use the existing buildings on the property and don't have any expansions Can you see the next slide, the site plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. So this is the property. They will be using an office area inside the building and also have a shop, and they'll have a fenced storage area for equipment that's waiting to go into the shop, and then they're also planning on a display area for products that will be sold, including the reel trailers on a gravel existing parking area. There's several standards for rezoning. Three are applicable that I'll go through. So the first one is that it conforms to our Story County C2C Plan. In this case, it's part of Story City's urban expansion area, and we reached out to Story City. They just wanted to be sure that the display area was kept neat, and so staff worked with the applicant to get a site plan showing how the equipment would be set up in that area. If there's any changes to the display area, it would be reviewed through a site planning process. So we concluded that there's not a condition required that the display area is kept neat because we do have a process in place where if there are changes to that area or the property, we can go through a site planning process to review that. The urban expansion area, just briefly, is an area that Story County worked with cities to identify areas outside of their boundaries for growth. This is in a priority growth area for Story City, but again, their only comment was they wanted the display area to be kept neat, so it's not, you know, a priority area, but, you know, it is urban expansion where we could possibly see in the future more commercial growth or potentially annexation. Standard two for rezoning is that it conforms with the statement and intent for the proposed district. The commercial light industrial district really allows a lot of general retail commercial uses and products, warehousing, fabricating, manufacturing uses. So Maverick Inc., again, refurbishes and sells ditch which trailers, so it's within these permitted uses. And also by removing the condition, it allows this property to be used in a way that, for more uses, which is more consistent with the broad and general nature of the commercial light industrial district, rather than just limiting the uses to agribusiness uses. This map on my next slide shows the areas adjacent to the south, which is actually an agricultural crop production, but also there's a commercial node at U.S. Highway 69 and 115th Street, and these areas are also all zoned commercial light industrial. We did not locate any conditions limiting the uses of these areas. The commercial node has been zoned commercial since 1958, so really, not only is the proposed use consistent with the commercial light industrial district, but it's more consistent with the surrounding land use as well. A rezoning sign was placed on the property, and we sent notice letters to property owners within a quarter mile and did publish notice in the newspaper as well, and we have received no comments. The Planning and Zoning Commission, at their September 2 meeting, recommended approval of the request and didn't have any questions or concerns, and there were no members of the public that provided comment. So with that, we're recommending alternative one, which is approval of the ordinance 289 on first consideration and setting second consideration for Tuesday, September 22. I'm happy to take any questions, and the applicant is also on the Zoom call.
Still heard, Renz, seats?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thanks. Amelia, I have a question. You indicated that there was publication in three newspapers?
Yes.
Was one of those, you said, The Sun?
Yes, the three official newspapers of the county.
Okay, it was news to me. The law used to be, and I'm out of touch with the law, the law used to be, we had to publish in three newspapers that were paid circulation.
Oh, maybe, hold on, let me open my publication.
Official.
I could have had the wrong newspaper name in there.
Okay, super. So Story City Herald, maybe?
I think it might have been the Tri-City.
The Tri-City. Okay, super, thank you. Okay, I just wanted to make sure about that. Thanks.
Yeah, that was probably my mistake. Stephanie helps me with the publications.
Sure thing.
I'm sure she got it right.
Otherwise, I have no question. It's a really straightforward kind of request, as far as I'm concerned. Supervisor Headman, did you have any questions?
I do not have any questions.
Okay, then, hearing no other questions, I'll open the public hearing. Any members of the public have comments? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion for approval of ordinance number 289.
I move approval of first consideration of ordinance 289.
I second.
And?
And setting second consideration.
And second consideration, I believe you said for September 22.
Yes.
I accept that change.
Okay, it's been moved and accepted. Any further discussion? Headman?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Approved. Second consideration next week. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then, Amelia, we'll go on to additional items. Discussion and consideration of hiring freeze exemption request for conservation aid.
We're having trouble with the owl.
We're having trouble with the owl?
Yeah.
So, you mean it's not picking up?
We can either take a five-minute, if the board will take a five-minute recess to start it.
Let's take a, we're taking a five-minute recess for technical difficulties.
Yeah. What are your? Sneakers. I just want to make sure that we're putting the right speaker sitting.
I think it's moving.
Okay. Laura say something. Okay, so it's moving toward Linda, and then it was moving toward you, because you said.
I was saying something.
Then now I'm back, I said something.
Okay. I think it's working.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, it's 10:25, and we're coming back from recess of the Story County Board Supervisors Meeting on September 15. We are at Agenda Item 15, Additional Items, Discussion and Consideration of Hiring Freeze Exemption Request for Conservation Aid. Mike Cox and Alyssa Wignall. Mike, are you on the line?
I am, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Mike. Please proceed.
Good morning, everyone. So this request is a request to hire a seasonal employee. I know that right now we're under a hiring freeze, so we're requesting exemption from that hiring freeze to.
I'm sorry, you need to speak up a little bit more.
Okay, is this better?
Yes, it is.
All right. So this is a request for exemption to the hiring freeze policy to bring onboard a seasonal employee that was budgeted to move forward with park operations functions. As you know, we, with being severely hit by the storm in the first part of August, we've been doing very little, if anything, other than storm cleanup and storm debris. So this is a position that we had held off with hiring due to the freeze, but we'd like to move forward with hiring this position to help us get caught back up and actually do some park work in addition to the storm debris removal. So with that, I guess I would answer any questions you may have.
Mike, Alyssa? Yes, I do. I have, the question is, fortunately, we received a memo from Alyssa. Anytime she's got items on the agenda, we get a little heads up from her, Mike, okay, and an email. And so she let us know that this is going to be a seasonal or a temporary position. Nowhere on this form does it say that it is a seasonal position. So it doesn't give an estimated start date, which would be something that I think we need to note, and there's a couple ways we could handle this. We can obviously do it in a motion, which, but if somebody were to look at this, they might misunderstand that it was in fact a hiring of a new conservation aid permanently, you know, if they looked at the agenda packet. So the other way would be just to have it come back next week with it filled out saying seasonal there. Joe's does, and the other one does, but this one doesn't say anywhere. I can write seasonal on the, when I sign it. Okay, Linda, just solve the problem. Did you hear her? I will write seasonal on the form when I sign it. So when do you think, Mike, that this position is likely to end?
This is a, this is a, this budgeted position is a little longer-term position that we'd bring on in the fall, typically late summer, and then work through the fall. So I would anticipate that this position will end somewhere this winter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're talking about the conservation aid, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. That was my only question. See, I want, I move that we approve exemption to the hiring freeze for a seasonal conservation aid with a preferred starting date of September 30, 2020, to end sometime in the winter of '21.
Second.
Okay, moving to the second. Any further discussion? If not, Headman?
Aye.
Olson? I'm sorry. It's okay.
Aye.
Headman?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Then next, we have, are you going? Yes, thank you. Next, we have discussion and consideration of hiring freeze exemption request for vegetation management aid. Again, Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Board, and I believe Joe Quaker is on the phone call for this. Joe or either?
I don't see Joe. Yeah, I do see Joe.
Okay, without Joe, then I will, I will just go ahead and take this one as well, then. This is a position for our IRVM program, similar to the discussion on the conservation aid position.
Mike, I'm sorry, can you speak up a little bit louder?
Okay, so this is, this is a position for our IRVM program, similarly budgeted to our conservation aid position, another seasonal position. I believe Joe does have some dates on this, if you look on the form.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, I guess he doesn't have that.
No, he does. Yeah, I think he says the position is desired is mid-October 2020 to February 2021.
Okay, there it is. Yep, thank you. So again, this is just a position that would help get caught up with workloads in the IRVM program and the drainage ditch maintenance program, seeding, herbicide application, et cetera. So this is again another position that has been pretty important to our program, and we'd like to get your permission to move forward with the hiring on this, and I see.
Hey, guys, I'm here finally. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay, so Joe's here, he's got any questions for? Morning, Joe.
Good morning. Sorry, I couldn't get it off mute, so, Mike, thanks for helping me out.
You bet. Any questions from the Board?
None for me, none for me. Okay, so this is also a seasonal position, and the dates are listed, so is there a motion to approve the hiring exemption request?
I move to approve the hiring exemption request for a vegetation management aid for the important seasonal position.
I second.
Headman?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Adopted.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, you guys. Thanks, Mike.
Next, discussion and consideration of the evaluation process for Board Supervisors' direct reports. Alyssa?
I don't know if you'll be able to hear me from here, but you should be able to see me. All right, so this item is just so the Board can set how they would like to handle their two direct report evaluations, the actual process, not the templates or the actual evaluation piece, but just how the Board would like to do it. So in looking at this, there are two, there are two options the Board can consider. They can do one evaluation as a collective board. You would, you would do it in a board meeting, the employee would have the option to request a closed session per Iowa code. That evaluation would be given to the employee as the board. It wouldn't be an individual supervisor's evaluation of that employee. The second option would be more individualized, so each supervisor would do an evaluation of the two direct reports, and that would be averaged together because our system averages it, and then the employee would receive that. It'd be more of an individual board member evaluation versus a collective board evaluation. So we'd like to, we'd like to handle it just like what we have, include the 360 like we have. We find that to be very useful, beneficial to get some input, and then the goal piece too. It's important to set future goals for those direct reports. So I'll let the Board ask any questions or discuss their thoughts on how you'd like to handle this.
I think our current way of thinking is more similar to option A. Am I correct? I know that it's not exact, but something a little bit more.
There'd be one evaluation, how they done it in the past, the Board would give feedback, but the Chair has always, in the past, done it and given it to the employee. There's lots of, there's not one right or wrong way. I have looked into other counties in different places on how they do it. They all do it differently. So it's just however the Board, the current Board has to handle this process.
So I'd like to give some feedback. I've only got one evaluation here coming up, right, in November, December, just for one of you left, and then I'm off the board.
You have one, yeah.
So it's more what you guys prefer, so I guess I'd like to give a little feedback here. Option B is similar, is a, is a, is a little similar to what was going on when I first came on the Board with the Chair filling out an evaluation form, and then it got passed to the other two supervisors who wrote in what they wanted, okay, you know, so we weren't doing it together, and then it was back to the employee in the chair. My one question about option B, though, is it's bullet point three. Each board member will get one, will set one performance score.
Yeah.
That's the only issue I saw with option B. And I think option A is fine, and I think the benefit to option A, which we did in part here this last evaluation, is it allowed us to listen to each other and to give our own feedback and our own perspective on what that one supervisor was saying. And with that, I'm going to back off, because like I said, this is really about, more about the future.
Option A. Option A would be the employee would 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 get a collective, it's the board, the board's perspective instead of individual board members on evaluation. Option A would be the only way to get that collective board evaluation.
I guess I'm just trying to think of kind of the process for option A.
Sure.
So would it be that that we have kind of a form or whatever to go through, to check off, and then write our goals on it, and then discuss, you know, have that separately that we could work on, but then potentially discuss in a board meeting or if that employee chooses to have that closed session?
Closed session. So how I see it happening is that the questions will be sent out in advance. So each board member would go through. You want to prepare prior to that board meeting on how you feel. Then the actual discussion and scoring of each component of that evaluation would be done in the board meeting, whether it's open session or closed session at the request of the individual. And then you, I mean, technically, you have to agree a two thirds vote on every sure. Every section of the evaluation and the goals.
I think with option A, with the board chair finalizing that, just that puts a lot of expectation on the board chair to summarize everything that everybody has said, and I'm a little concerned about that.
There's no summary. It would be a simple, you know, doesn't meet, meets, exceeds. And it the board chair would just take the final evaluation from that board. We just need one person to put it into the board.
So you wouldn't have comments?
No. Just it would just be the scores and the goals.
So it would be just, yeah, but if I would just want to make sure, to me, it sounds like if you did it, I'd like to have you individually doing some scoring and then collectively having discussion. I think it would use less ambiguity for the complete, you have similar goals. Because if I have a goal that separates separate from everyone else, that's going to be confusing and could be contradictory
Yeah.
for the employees. So I want to, for me, I would want, I would want that.
And in looking at this, the system just doesn't let like an administrative person go in and input the evaluation. I had Noel look into that. It doesn't appear that we're able to do that. We actually have to have one of the managers complete, you know, click the dots on it. So I mean, HR would be able to review and make sure everything would match what was approved in the board meeting.
So I do have a question about comments, because I know in the past, comments have been appreciated.
Sure.
Okay, especially recognizing an emerging skill or broadening of a skill. But once again, in option A, the supervisors could still agree upon it with that, and then that could be a one sentence of the comment section.
Sorry, I understood.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why I was saying, you know, they're using something in the comment section. And it would it would mean that we would have to go through the entire thing and get all the comments exactly as we wanted them if the board chair were to enter that on behalf of everybody, and they should be succinct.
Right. It's not going to be an easy process regardless of which which option you choose. It does take a little bit, but it's it's dependent on how the board wants to move forward.
Well, option B is a portion where it's time often to finalize the evaluation.
Just in the system. So the board approves it, they just go in and click approved. It, you know, we do want to keep keep everything consistent with the perform online, so everybody's evaluations, they're stored there, everything. So it's merely just whatever the board decides on if they do it in a board meeting, inputting it into that software system. And and we can still continue to look at at better options. That's just where we're at right now, is having a manager input it.
So what's what's everybody's, when is your evaluation due?
March.
March?
End of March. Or middle March, sorry.
So you have one evaluation to three of those counties. So, or which first?
I really will defer to you guys. Either system is workable. I probably prefer A a little bit more for the one I'm doing this November. Yeah, I I think for me, I just like option A a little bit more. I do hear what Linda says, the board chair, just some additional typing to make sure that they can put in the information and then sign off on it.
Well, I think it's important that we at the table decide
Absolutely.
in there, so the board chair is.
You get good notes. You get good notes, so that the board chair is just typing in those notes and agreeing upon.
So I'll ask everybody if we go option A, and ask everybody, stop on keeping notes on this. I think that's fair.
I think that's.
Yeah. And as you guys, if you decide to rotate through on board chairs, everybody will get an opportunity. So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve option A or any of them on the evaluation.
All second, that then? Listen, anything else? Anything you'd like to comment on?
I I don't think so. I think we're good, and we always learn each time. So if there's something that doesn't work in the process real well, we'll streamline it a little bit. I mean, it's just a, yeah.
Then we'll go, Headens.
I.
Olson. I. Merkin, I. Alyssa, thank you for putting this together for us. Next, discussion consideration of adding additional lock-in provisions to the intercoyer doors, the main entry to the Detroit County Conservation Center for $6,100. I have trouble with that number, don't I? $5,100. John.
Yeah.
Good morning, John.
Good morning. Any questions? Have you seen the proposal on the release? The only thing I have to add is he said it'd be two to three weeks getting the parts, and then whatever time it takes for him to schedule his crew to come up and do the work.
I know there's the, I mean, the cost at $5,000 and some dollars, to me, does not seem inordinately large, given what we're asking to do in the additional functionality and the ability to control access to that building, which may in the future help address some of the long-term concerns about people just wandering through and parking themselves for the day.
And our staff will move the phone line out into that foyer.
Okay. Looks like it's my turn. So I move that we adopt the recommendation from Facilities Management to put in some changes in access and entry at the change of the phone line at the Services Center in the estimated amount of $5,073.45, which will not include the cost of moving the phone.
The $5,700 was for, is that include the phone line?
No.
Like the $5,100?
Which would be just for the door. So I just want to make sure. No, it was $5,7345 and the cost to move the phone.
That's that's our motion. I'll say.
Okay, any further discussion? Not Olson?
I.
Headens, I. Merkin, I. Thank you, John.
You bet.
I didn't see H2. Then we have discussion consideration of tentative referral from Detroit County Board of Health, countywide, mandatory face covering regulations, and consideration of resolution 21.18, mandate used face covering from Detroit County to mitigate transmission of COVID-19. We had this on the agenda last week. I wondered if there are quickly additional update before we decide on whether or not we're going to do any action on this.
Well, we did receive an email that same day, the afternoon of our board meeting, Tuesday, from Ethan Anderson, Assistant County Attorney, Civil Attorney, who indicated that he had made communication with ICAP, who carries our insurance, and that they said that other than the event of which, if there was some kind of criminal activity, if I recall his email exactly, ICAP thought that it would be covered, we should go ahead and at least submit it, but there was no 100% guarantee. I did then, in talking to Alyssa Wigmell, discovered that our ICAP policy was on our S drive, G drive, one of the drives. Okay, because I, if you remember, I responded back to Ethan, saying, well, what are those exceptions? Please give the exception. So Friday afternoon, in the office, I cruised those 343 pages, identified what I felt were about the 10 pages, 10 to 14, that covered what we were talking about was act by elected officials. Okay, I then kept that out, edited the PDF to just cut out that section. I sent it to both of you, I copied it to Ethan Anderson and Alyssa Wigmell, and then I kind of highlighted what I thought might in any way be applicable. And it's actually pretty short. It addresses, if you recall looking at that, it addresses that we would be covered for what is considered, it's called a wrongful act, that it would be something that we do in good, I'm not going to use the word good faith. They don't use the word good faith. Okay, but that in the performance of our duties as we're trying to make a decision that it is covered there. And I believe if you print it off in color, you should see the highlight in the yellow there. So then I went down, I highlighted everything that maybe could have been involved. You know, there is a clause, we're not covered for maliciousness or malfeasance. Clearly, the thought there is that, I would like to argue that we're acting in very good faith. Okay, with whatever we do, we're doing it from a genuine belief, and we're trying to do what we believe is best for the county, and it certainly is within what our duties are to do that. Okay? So the only other thing, comment, I guess I personally would like to make, is that after our meeting Tuesday, we have received, or I've at least received, some, a few more communications, and some of those kept on saying we were doing an illegal activity. And I have responded to them explaining that about Section 135 and then the Ohio Constitution in Section 137, and that this has never been litigated. And Section 135 is is an attorney's interpretation, including our county attorney's interpretation, that it would supersede 137, which specifically states the Board of Health can put in regulations in the Constitution, Ohio Constitution, which says that we, as a county, can take on any home rule, allows us to take on anything that is not specifically prohibited or reserved for the state legislature. And so therefore, illegal, in my opinion, is the incorrect term to be using. Okay, we're trying to make a decision about what, in fact, we are able to do in the time of a pandemic, if we so choose to. So and those are my comments. And once again, I'd like to clean out any legal degree. I sought legal counsel outside. We have been provided with legal counsel from inside, that they feel a different way. And we all know that attorneys don't always agree.
Supervisor Headens, do you want to be heard, sir?
Yeah, you know, I've struggled on this. But I think personally, I know where I'm at. The question is, legally or enforceably, what can we do? And that's where my my struggle has been. I've heard from folks in support of the mandate and folks that are against the mandate. I've listened to our county attorney, our civil attorney, Ethan Anderson. I've talked with them on numerous occasions, probably reiterating some of our conversations come back in March, all the way to September here, and I know their position hasn't changed. I, too, have reached out to a few other attorneys, one additional who would be probably more that, oh, yeah, you probably do have the authority, but several others that I've reached out to, again, were more generic conversations, nothing in writing, but then just the opposite, that said, yes, mask, everybody needs to wear masks, you don't have the ability to do that. So the one thing I did this morning is I reached out to ICAP to find out if they had any position. And I recently just got a some information from their general counsel. And one of the things that they commented here is recognizing that, one thing they do say is they they do believe that counties do have rule over their property. There is, they have no dispute on that. It's whether it's outside the property that you have that control over, and that's still up for discussion or determination. But the one thing that they put out is because she is that she said that because, she goes, there could be plausible arguments on both sides. But she goes, but they felt her recommendation to me was that it's also important that you work with your county attorneys and have their support in the matter to proceed down a path contrary to the opinion of the governor and the attorney general. So that gives me another sense of cause to. I know that the attorney general's office have given out a couple of opinions, and I know you can make that determination of whether it's formal or informal. You know, it's not a letter signed by AG Tom Miller. There's been one by Heather Adams and Bennett, Michael Bennett? I think I had to think of that personally, Michael Bennett. Given their determination that local authorities do not have the ability to implement ordinance based on the governor's emergency declaration, and I believe 29th C. And not only have they put something in writing, but they've also given guidelines, you know, they've provided a document with some guidelines in regards to that as well. So to me, that gives it a little bit more validity or of being more of a formal, I guess you'd say, opinion. Again, I recognize it doesn't have Tom Miller's final signature on, but they are two attorneys that have provided that information. So that's, you know, that's just something I feel that needs to be part of the discussion here. We have our county attorney's office who said if we were to implement a mask mandate, that they would not represent us. I think that is pretty telling. Do I want this pandemic to go away? Absolutely. Do I morally think that's right, that we go mask mandate? Absolutely. I just don't know that I think we have the legal authority to do it, and that's where I'm struggling with, is what we have as legal authority to do when I have two people from the AG's office and our county attorney stating what we are able to do or not to do. And it is a struggle for me when I hear of the Board of Health, the work that they've put in, but I also recognize that their last meeting, that they they even commented, Dr. Paulson, you can comment, that the ball read was on the our meeting last week, he said this is another tool that's probably toolbox, that when the governor allowed locals to implement a mask mandate, we'd be ready to go. We could go right with that. You know, I think that's part of our conversation that we had as a board as well to say that we wanted to have something ready to go. Should we do that? Has this issue kept me up at night? Absolutely. Absolutely it has. It has been very stressful. But I don't know that we can can institute this without backing of our county attorney, in particular, since Isaac got back to me this morning, with that same information.
So may I ask you? I may add, goodness.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask. Here's to you.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
So when the county, when Ethan said he wouldn't represent, okay, it would be Ethan, he said it was ethically, it would not be right for him to argue the other side. Okay, so you did acknowledge that, right? So and then the other thing is, is that ICAP does have a county attorney affiliate, too. So you do recognize that also.
My turn? Apologize to all the attorneys in the world that I didn't talk to any of you this last week. I really feel like it's, in my mind, it's past a legal opinion here or there. It's going back and saying, what is it that we want to accomplish? And that's what I've been thinking about. We want to stress the importance of wearing face covering, not because it protects you, but because you're protecting. but because you're protecting other people. We see more and more that we have asymptomatic people who are testing positive, therefore are spreading the virus unknowing, doesn't matter if it took a temperature, doesn't matter whatever, you can be asymptomatic and you can be spreading virus. So, how do we stress the importance of wearing a face covering? How do we, so to speak, engage the hearts and minds of the people of Story County to do this? I don't think it is by a penalty. I don't believe, I believe that in Story County, we should be consistent. I look at the fact that the city of Ames adopted an ordinance without a penalty. And what I hear anecdotally is that more people are wearing face coverings in Ames. Iowa State President Winters team took a strong stand with students, more students are wearing face coverings off campus. I do not think we, and I've gotten the same emails, people think it's a violation of liberties. I'm sorry, I don't think it is, but I'm not to the point of saying we're going to make a penalty and make criminals of people. I want to appeal to people's better, better senses of this and to say, please, wear face coverings for the good of your family, for the good of your friends, your neighbors, whatever. I think we should be consistent with the city of Ames, and that we should have a regulation that requires, but does not have a penalty. Perhaps we could do it so that when the governor lists your proclamation or allows local governments to enact an ordinance, that then our penalty provisions go into effect that would satisfy the people who say you're doing something that is not being allowed by the governor, you're doing something that's illegal. I would make a motion that we return this regulation to the Board of Health and ask them if they would consider sending us the regulation without Sections 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3 as immediate implementation, but to note them as implemented when the governor's regulation would expire, or when the governor would change her regulation, or change her proclamation so that local ordinances could adopt face covering regulations.
I'll second the discussion.
Motion for purposes of discussion. Let's have discussion.
So what you're, is your proposal, I don't have it in front of me, but we're proposing last week that, which was determined they could not do, but that would come back to the board and do another. They would have to, the board would have to, I think, and Ethan could explain that, but I think the Board of Health would have to publish again. And have another hearing. If they chose to honor our request, they would have to send me that, they would have to do another publication. So you have three more weeks, though? Yeah, I, I know, I know the timing is the challenge there. As I said, I am conflicted of, I want people wearing a mask. Absolutely that I, I want that, and believe that. But I also have a responsibility as an elected official, not only to help and take visitors to everything within the county. And that's where I challenge, and when I have to, not only the, our attorney generals, or how the attorney's office, the attorney generals, and then some information from ISACs as well, providing information, that gives the cause on our ability to move forward. I know that there have been some other, at least one other county, but some other cities that have pushed forward a mandate. Many of them do not have a fine.
I just, for point of clarification, a media outlook got it wrong after COVID-19 last week, so I think it's very clear, Johnson County has a problem. No, I know, but I just, so just be very careful, you know, some do, some don't.
I said, I said many tend not, I did not, they all do not, you're absolutely right.
I also read a news article this week that no local jurisdiction had issued an [inaudible].
Well, I think you know where I all stand, okay? I'm not afraid of a lawsuit. When I was 24 years old, I sued my hometown for denial of a liquor license on a boat. I won in federal court on a summary judgment. All right? So I've been through a big lawsuit before, all right? I know that from my years of covering government, that sometimes the way you get inaccuracies or inconsistencies in the law, which I believe is a valid argument here, is you have to go to court on it. And the other thing as far as insurance premiums, we do pay for insurance premiums. And I can't find any, any reason to put a cost on another human life, or a cost on what it could infect somebody with their lungs, or their brain, et cetera, for the rest of their life. So sometimes, being an elected official is putting, is putting, yes, your taxpayer money where your beliefs are. And so I am not ambivalent about this at all. I, it sounds like I may be out more in the public than you to, because of my husband was dining and also shopping at some other places, et cetera. I had a scary, scary experience on Saturday in a local convenience store. And when I say I had it, we, the consumers in there, had multiple people without face masks, and some of us were wearing it. And then some guy came in without a face mask and a refillable cup, was going to try and refill his cup. Which is frightening to think about the passage of the [inaudible]. So, so I, we're not going to hit everybody with it, but it sounds like we're a dead deal. We've watched numbers, and we have moaned among ourselves about how terrible this all is. And when the Board of Health did their part, and now it's up to us to do our heart part, and then if we would do our part and put an enforcement clause in, then it would be up to the county attorney and up to the sheriff to do their part. But, so I am just very adamant that this is not a time for half majors. I think the city council, with all due respect and the fact I left all very much personally, I, I don't feel that they made the best decision for the citizens.
Anything further?
I do not take this vote lightly at all. As I said, I wrestled with it. And when we reach out to our attorney to ask for their legal opinion, we're not asking for their personal opinions on it. That's the same thing when we reached out to the AG's office or the other attorneys that I spoke with. I know that folks are going to be disappointed in the vote today, whichever way you vote. I, I recognize that. And that's probably the hardest, the hardest, the hardest part of being an elected official when you have to vote on something is, which one can you most live with? You know, you don't want any pain and suffering. But there is another side that will wait in here. And I just, I, you look to your legal, your legal team for direction. And they have given us, their direction has been consistent all the way along. You, if they are not providing for you, look to, or at least I look to the attorney general's office, and they have given their direction as well. I just, I wish the governor could allow the mandate. I wish she would allow local governments to have that authority. She is going under emergency orders and stipulating that she has the authority to make those decisions, and that locals do not have that authority. I understand that to be litigated out in courts. I want people to be protected. I wish that the governor would, I wish the governor would, I wish he would at least respond to our letter. But I wish he would, would allow locals and designate locals to have that, that ability.
We still haven't heard from you. We talked about that last week, and I.
They also, they also haven't responded to my request and freedom of information request.
So, the motion we have in front of us is that we return the regulation to the Board of Health, asking them that they note on it, Sections 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, steps from penalties shall not go into effect until the governor allows local municipal government to enact an ordinance or regulation requiring wearing a face coverings until the expiration of the governor's most recent public health proclamation regarding COVID-19 10 damage. Shelley, that's the.
No, she wasn't the motion to remove 1, 2, and 3?
And, and say until the governor would allow them.
That's why I asked for clarification.
Yes. And that's the, and I should have read, that's what I gave Shelley last Friday, saying that was my, what I was going to put into the resolution. That's why I read it again, I'll give it to you. That is my motion. So, I'll just, since everybody's had some final last words, I'll just have my final last words on this. I, I've been sued before, and won and lost, and I'm not afraid of lawsuits, I feel like it's the right thing to do at all. I just don't believe right now that it's the right thing to do for us to impose a penalty with the governor's proclamation still there. I think it, it muddies waters, and I think us having something different on the county level than the city of Ames has, which has decreased the population of the county, further muddies the waters. I would hope, as Supervisor Headens has said, that governor mentals would join with the majority of the other governors and look at face covering. And she hasn't, that's her, that's her authority, I guess, a lot of using her authority there. I think the state of Iowa would be better off if she would do that. But I also believe that we want to appeal to the better instincts of the people of Story County, and, and that we should pass something, but I don't think we should have a penalty at this time, reasons we've talked about. So, is there anything else before we vote on the motion in front of us? Okay, Headens?
Aye.
Paulson?
May.
Merkin? Aye. Motion theories. Thank you very much, everybody. Good discussion. And I agree with Supervisor Headens, I think there's people, and no matter what, we're going to vote today, we think it was the right thing to do, but I think we gave it a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of consideration. So, let's move on to departmental reports then. We have a report from Conservation, and I don't know if my pass is still online, unless they add or highlight anything. Hi, Mike.
Hi. I'll let that report stand as written, unless you have any questions, I have nothing to add right now, thank you.
Okay.
Is that coming to the owl? No.
He said that, yeah. Okay, thank you, Mike. Any questions? We'll go on to Facilities and Management Quarterly Report, John. Booked it over, do you have anything you want to highlight or add? Are there any questions for John? Next then, we have the IT Quarterly Report. Barb, are you on the Zoom call? And so do you have anything to add? I see you there, Barb.
Yes, can you hear me, board?
No. You have to go a little more.
Okay, I'm using a headset, so maybe it's a little low. Well, one of the, just wanted to highlight the UPS replacement that we're doing. It's, as we're digging into it, it's turning out to be a lot more than we thought it would be, and it's going to result in some outage at the sheriff's office. We have two UPS units that we're going to replace, one at HSC, which if we do it on a weekend, would have minimal impact. But the one here at the admin building does control the E911 system, so we're working through that. The exact age of the current units is unknown. However, Joel said they were here when he started 17 years ago. I suspect they were put in when the original phone system was put in in 1998. We do have this budgeted, and we'd like to get those replaced, and before they decide that they no longer want to operate. I also wanted to comment on the sound in today's meeting. As you know, the amplifier in the Crestron system died last week. I, I'm thinking, we didn't think when the owl was plugged in that it had much impact on the sound, but listening to the meeting today, sometimes people are a little garbled. I think probably the Crestron system is the reason for that. We do have a new amp ordered, it should be in soon, we don't have an ETA on that yet.
How long will 911 be down?
Pardon?
You said when UPS is switched out and admin that controls the 911 system?
Correct. We, well, we have some options that we're discussing. ISU is willing to loan us some alternate power sources, and we are going to switch over to our DR backup for the servers. So, the, the only people that will be affected, once we get all that done, is the people here in dispatch and Nevada. And we're suspecting four to six hours is what the vendor is telling us. We're hoping that it will be within that timeframe, as with anything else, once you get in it, then you find out, oh, guess what, there's something else. But they're thinking four to six hours would be the downtime.
Not without service. So they'll get it figured out.
Okay, that was, that was my concern. Melissa just said you'll figure it out, so 911 calls will be answered, will be taken.
Sure, we can route those from one location to another, so there's no chance that the calls will be dropped.
Okay, good, good, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, we have, the multi-agency is made up of city Ames, ISU, and Story County, so if one has to undergo some remodeling or anything, we route the calls to the other two PSAPs.
To another PSAP.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Did you get a chance to look at the email summary? I thought that was something that might interest you. It looks like we get, and this, I must say, the email traffic, this was a light day, about 57,000 emails coming in. This is a 10-day range that we submitted. Only of those 57,000, only 23 were allowed due to viruses and spam and multiple hits. So I thought that was kind of an interesting figure that I'd pass along. We have a lot of people trying to email us, and I think as the election gets closer, it's going to be much more than the 57,000 in a 10-day span. That's all I have, board.
Yeah, I do want the, on the email traffic's humming again. Barb, do we have kind of benchmarks, or where our rate changes according to how many incoming are referred?
What type of benchmarks are you asking?
Just like if we, for the first 50,000 that we let through, it's one rate, and then if there's another 50,000, there's another rate. So I guess benchmark wouldn't be quite the word, but it would be, do we have some kind of tiered type of pricing applied to us?
No, there is, the device is purchased, so there's no tiers as far as pricing or anything, it's just we own it, and the activity is just, so increased activity might show up not in pricing, but in slowness of receiving emails. If the server has just got a lot to do, if you're sending something out, it might not instantly get to its recipient, and the other way around.
Okay.
Until it's processed.
Sure, thank you.
Thanks, board.
You have a question? You have questions? Not, we'll go on to other reports.
I just want to make a comment general to all three of the departments. Thank you very much for the quality of the information in your reports. Each one had a little different format, but I think it was very clear for us, very clear for the public, to go through and understand what your activities were and, you know, for even, you know, the diversity management today. So I just want to thank you. And I always like a good chart. There, so thanks, Barb.
You're welcome.
You have questions?
No.
Okay, we'll go on to 17 other reports, and we have the Urban Renewal Area Program app.
Yeah. Good morning. I'm going to just quickly just revisit a presentation I did a little bit earlier this morning during the consultation meeting. Just some background information, Story County Urban Renewal Area Program. It is our TIF Tax Increment Financing Program. It has three components. The Urban Renewal Area Plan, Chapter 8 of the Code of Warnesses, which is adopts, addresses the properties that are included for the revenue, and then the Economic Development Process and Policy. The plan itself was originally adopted November 2011. Annually, it is revisited, and as projects are brought to the board upon application and ultimately approved there, then added in. And this generally occurs every fall because debt does need to be certified to the county auditor by December 1st. The Chapter 8 of the Code of Warnesses, as I said, is the chapter in the code that outlines properties that the revenues are received, and I'll have a slide here shortly that shows you where those, illustrates those. The process and policies then are the timeframes, the guidance for how applications are brought forward through this process that we're here today for, and just the, the eyes and, where you dot your i's and your t's to make sure you're following all the requirements of state code. So, through the economic development process, there are eligibility criteria. There are five of them. And I won't read those. Everyone can see them on the screen, but in order to come through the application, the applicants need to identify which of those five they need. Required application match of 25%. And then, just, this slide does demonstrate the awards that have been granted since 2011. I do, I didn't note this in the consultation meeting, but I will here. In 2018, there were no awards. The program was not run that year, so that's why there's a gap between 2017 and 2019. But a little over $1.4 million over the past several years. Then there are several county projects funded, Dakin's Lake, Prairie Road Trail, the Tedesco Learning Center, which is listed as ISU Research Park here, or TELP. And then, what is before you today is presentations from the four applications that we did receive. All four met the timeframe as required. All four did attend the prior meeting as well, applicant briefing meeting. When I go back to the other computer, I will have them go in order of Ames, Cambridge, Story City, and then Zering. I may have Zering next week if Karen has to leave for another meeting. Again, the TIF revenues are outlined in Chapter 8, the Code of Warnesses. Generally, these are the wintered-in properties throughout Story County, as well as better equipment. So you've seen this slide a couple times, the timeframe that we're following. The goal is that December 1st, deadlines of the county auditor for certifying debt, so hopefully by the end of October, we'll have this process wrapped up with public hearing. Are there any questions on that?
I would like to do a suggestion. Could we move Zering off? There's no reason to make first sit through again. That okay with you, Mike?
Fine, Brian.
Karen, are you ready to go then?
Sorry. I'm sorry, was that me for Zering?
Yep, that is you.
Sorry. Trying to make sure I can hear with the audio, so I apologize. The project that the city of Zering would like to apply for and has applied for is for LED signage that would enhance the entire community. We have an opportunity to work with the school district as well, which would be a placement of this signage on their property that they would be willing to assume the electrical expenses for. But it would become a community sign that would, we feel, would enhance the entrance to the Dakin Center, entice people to our downtown, especially with the extension of the Prairie Rail Trail, and encourage people to make their way throughout the community and allow us to enhance the other areas, as in the other communities, to let them know what we have going on. We have many, when COVID was not in, in the picture, of course, we had different community outreach, dinners and lunches and things like that. And so, we just want to be able to express everything the town has going on, give the school the opportunity to draw in folks, enhance the part that we have, community and school events that go on at Dakin's Lake as well. And so, we just want to embrace all of it and try to present everything that our community has to offer.
I have a question.
Yes.
Floris, okay. So, you're always asked here to indicate the sources of the cost of estimates, including, we'd like to know about those matching funds, where they're going to come from. And I was a little confused by your narrative, because it looks like you indicated who the estimates are, but they're not clear if those people are donating those services.
I'm actually, I'm working with the school. The school will be helping to contribute portion of the electrical expenses. As we, we in this area are very excited, we finally had our first bond pass. And so, we have, this summer, the three-story structure of the school has been taken down. And because of that, we would be able to add that electrical service in, in cooperation with the school as they begin the new construction.
And you think that'll go ahead and take care of the $66 or $6700 match then?
Not in its entirety. The additional would be the actual installation. The rough expense if we would have to pay a contractor to actually do the installation would be approximately $1,000. This is also designed that it can be a community service type of project that we would not have to hire a contractor to install due to the fact that we would be able to have that electrical service already in place in cooperation with the school.
Okay, so you're looking at maybe a combination of match partnerships, maybe having to put a little money in.
Yes.
That's it. So, my other comment is, is we've done these types of signs before under this project, other projects. This is one of the reasons that this grant exists, is it's clearly by economic development promotion. It is clearly promotion of activities in the community, which are in fact economic development, oftentimes in a smaller home, or a smaller community. Sorry about that. So, so that's, those are, that's my feedback on this particular application. It just seems right along with what the money was, and the program was originally created for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Karen?
I don't have a full time.
Okay, then who are we going to now, you know?
Ames.
Ames, John Hall?
Good morning. Can you all hear me this morning?
Yes, hi, Don.
Hello, thank you. I just wanted to make sure my audio is working sufficiently. So, as you can see in our application, our intention really is to work to complete kind of our third phase of beautification for downtown Ames as a part of this, this grant project, this grant project. This year, our challenges in downtown Ames have been particularly interesting, given the need to respond to COVID, our need to continue to promote retail and restaurant activity for our downtown businesses, and our limited ability to actually do a lot of those things over the course of time. So, what we've done is, is worked to increase the value of the destination that we are. So, that's really, the goal of this is, is two phases. One is that destination component. So, that's things like the art, wherever we can put it, so that folks have something to constantly look at and something new to discover every time they're downtown. And then, the outdoor dining, we see as a, as kind of a long-term need in our downtown. So we've had benches throughout downtown Ames for a number of years, and we've had artists continually have updated those and kept them painted and looking nice. And this year, we've seen even more of a trend, particularly during like the lunchtime hours or dinnertime hours, where people are eating on their laps on those benches, because we just don't have enough outdoor kind of general use spaces. So, that's the intention of then, the tables and chairs and umbrellas is to continue to provide more of those type of spaces as we see that even at least in the immediate term, there's a need for it. But it's really shown that there's a long-term opportunity to go get after that. And then, the directional signages are really focused on driving traffic to our businesses that are in downtown that if you are walking along down there and stop to look at this directional signage, it is pointing you to things that you can buy, eat, or drink, or go do right now. So, most of our service businesses won't be on that directional signage, because they're destination businesses. This is all intended to point folks towards our retail and our restaurant and our entertainment facilities downtown. So, overall, we're anticipating a little north of $27,000 for this project, and have come to you all asking for $23,359.
So it looks like you've already put over $1,200 private, plus some in-kind from Lowe's on Phase 1 and 2, correct?
What, pardon? I missed that.
And you said Phase 1 was dealt with considerable in-kind contribution from Lowe's and $6,300 private. Phase 2 was $6,000 in private. So, is the, the match will be from private donations for the Phase 3 that you're asking?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
At least I'll let you go. I'll go a couple, but, go ahead. Okay, so Jeff, first of all, let's talk about that batch here. I just want to clarify that when this was on a Ames City Council agenda, I don't know, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, that was not to ask to the city for the match money, right? It was just to get John Gila's signature to present it as a part, right?
Correct, correct. It is our intention to not ask the city of Ames for any of the matching dollars on this that we will privately fundraise from our downtown businesses.
Okay, so here's my issue with this. In the past, when you go back and you take a look at what this money has been used for, one of the other conditions in addition to showing, how does this really enhance economic development? Which, it's pretty clear where your goal is here, economic development wise. But it is not, it has been the practice in the past to not fund easily disposable or breakable or disappearable items. Hence, you know, when benches were put in in Story City, they're attached, right? They're bolted down, just like the bolted on Main Street. So therefore, the tables, the chairs, and the umbrellas don't fit into what I consider a good investment of taxpayer money. All right? So I did some math myself about where I would be. My question is, what about those cigarette disposal units? Are they movable? Are they going to be actually bolted to the net?
I, I guess I'd back up to the tables and chairs. You know, it's certainly our intention that these aren't easily disposable units and that they last for quite a period of time. We partnered with American Country Home Store to actually get the quotes on these, and they've provided these, these types of sets really throughout kind of all the United States that, that even if they are not ultimately bolted down, we'll, we'll be working to figure out some ability to secure those so that they're not walking off or disappearing. But it's our intention that it would be nice to be able to store them over, over the wintertime. In terms of the cigarette receptacles.
Since you went back to those, but breakability also.
Yep, and, and so that's, that's where American Country Home Store has been our, our go-to on this is because they've deployed these into commercial businesses throughout, all over the United States. So they were the ones who provided us some example, example pieces on this. And it was actually Minnie Bergstrom with Cook's Emporium that initially inquired about those, booking forms specifically for commercial use within the downtown. The cigarette receptacles, it's our intention that these will actually be, you know, strapped or adhered to light poles or to buildings, depending on where all we can deploy them at. But, but it's our intention that, that all these things are set up to last.
Okay, I'm probably going to need to see more information on that outdoor chairs and tables, you know, on that to see that there's real, like, multi-year lasting power, I mean, you know, on those, on that. And the cigarette disposal units, they don't cost much themselves, but then you're asking for money to paint them, which is why I want to know about how they're going to be attached also. I have no issue with, I mean, the painting by artists if those disposable units have actually been, disposal units can be attached. The signage for additional locational signs is right up the alley of what the grant was, if these grants were intended for. And also, then the second murals, we funded, you know, murals, or painting of the buildings in downtown Palms, you know. So that's my big concern here, is I think that there could be, once again, an expanding and stretching of what the real purpose of this grant is, is to use tax dollars, or the tax dollars we're getting from the, into lasting items. So, that's my comment.
I think my only comment, John, is kind of going up on the painting, the cigarette disposal use painted by local artists. So, are you looking at, to this grant, to actually pay for the paints or for the artists? Or is that something they will in-kind paint if you're, you're wanting part of the budget for the receptacle?
Sorry, you were cutting out there a little bit, Lisa.
So I guess my question is, is part of your budget for like the cigarette disposal units, is it just that you're requesting funding for the cigarette disposal unit? And that the artists that paint them are, is their paints or whatever is needed to paint that part of your budget? Or is that something in time that they are going to, as part of kind of the display for downtown?
You're asking if they're paying the artist to paint them?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've got a stipend in here for, for each of the cigarette receptacles for $250 per receptacle to actually hire the artists. So it's our intention that, while, while I indicated painting, if you remember back to when Ames did the size statues a few years ago, depending on each artist's kind of interest in, in particular niche, they may be decorated in other ways that are artistic, but may not be necessarily painted. So, we've spoken with the Ames Community Arts Council to actually work with them to find those local artists and hire them, and $250 seemed like a fair number that would cover supply costs as well as allow them to actually be able to paint them, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Are they plastic receptacles? That's a pretty reasonable price there for $6,000.
They are actually, my understanding is they're metal receptacles. The, the interesting component to them is that the refuse that's in them can actually be dumped into a cardboard box, so we can collect all 18 receptacles into this cardboard box. And because we're purchasing them through this company, this company is all about zero waste, so we actually box that up, ship it to this company, and they fully recycle all those contents then. So, that's, that's kind of the interest. So, that's, that's kind of the interest that we, we saw with, with pursuing these ones. Um, and, and yeah, they are fully aluminum, um, uh, rust resistant. Uh, I believe it was, uh, Amy Howard in, in our office who saw these on an inner-city visit down to, uh, I couldn't, I, I don't remember which inner-city.
But I just wondered what material they were. Okay, thanks, aluminum sounds a little better than plastic out in thirty below weather, okay.
Right.
I have no questions, John, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you guys.
And who do we have up next? Cambridge.
Abe. Yeah, hello, how are you all doing?
Good. Hi, how are you, Dave?
Good, good. Hey, uh, as you can see, the city of Cambridge has put an app, uh, a grant application for backup generator for the city center. Um, and I, I think it's particularly applicable at this time, considering what's happened with the wind event, and the town was, a lot of the town's out of power for about a week. So, and there was really no place for people to go. Um, this generator would power the entire facility, uh, run the air conditioner, heating in the winter if necessary. Uh, it would provide the power for the library for internet. And, uh, I, the city feels it would just be a good addition. Additionally, uh, the city center is the gathering point for Cambridge Elementary East. And the event of something happening where they got to get the students out of the school, they go to the city center. And, um, that would, we feel that would be a nice asset as well. And the third thing of this, it would kind of help us out with our, Story County, just, our, our hazard mitigation plan, which we submitted in August of twenty-eighteen, and, um, listing that as a gathering point for the city as well in, in case of emergency. The generator would be natural gas. It would be located just across from the city center, behind it. Actually, there's an alley there and we own the lot. And there's a, a slab there that would be permanently located. So, that's basically what we're looking at.
Any questions?
For any questions?
How do you justify this as economic development? Because this reads right out of my book as, as emergency management and city responsibility.
It's really not economic development. What we looked at it as under was inf, utility infrastructure expansion. Uh, like I said, allowing us to be a gathering point in a, in a, an emergency that happens, could possibly happen. So, that's how we justified that.
So in the past, I believe, if you can help me here, you guys have used utility expansion infrastructure in the past, but that had to do with your streetlights, right? I mean, part of the whole, you built that new center, and so I believe the county came in with about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars there. And then there was a separate one having to do with infrastructure as an improvement of your streets and the streetlights, if I recall. They, that is economic development, if you will, that's development, right? So maybe somebody will buy another building on the street. Maybe somebody will rehab a building, that type of thing. This, I'm having a really tough time justifying this as anything more than something that you guys need to take care of out of emergency management or get a grant for with your, you know, because of the mitigation. I get it, what it's used for. It's just that utility expansion and infrastructure is, once again, the reasonable to how will this help you, uh, be able to build more houses, be able to open a new business, you know, to facilitate the infrastructure for that?
Well, I, I think the city was coming off from the angle of looking at it for providing a gathering point in the event of an emergency. Um, again, I have to emphasize that it is the gathering point for the Elementary East School. And I, that's the way we've looked at it, so that's the way we've submitted it.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? I do not. Okay, I have no questions either. Um, thank you very much. So we'll go on then to Story City. Who do we have, who is from Story City? It's like Mark Jackson, there he is.
Here I is.
Hello, Mark.
Good morning, supervisors. Uh, I got to take off my glasses because I only need it for distance and I can't see you, it's all a blur. So, anyway, um, what we're looking at doing is with the recent, um, activity that's taken place in the city's Interstate Thirty-five Business Park, is the city along with our, um, Story City EDC, um, has decided to, we need to enhance the entrance sign that is there. And I think you have a picture of that. It's a pretty generic concrete sign that is there existing. Um, what we've, we're planning to do is, um, basically if you, um, is enhance it and refurbish it. Um, and basically what we're going to do is, if you're familiar with the Swinging Bridge, um, in the South Park, the pillars that are there, what we're going to do is take, uh, stone that is similar to that and use that to sort of wrap around and outline the existing sign that is there and use lighting and that sort of thing. Uh, so it's stonework there. And so, and then the other part of it is, um, we're going to replace the lettering that is there as well, and I'm, I'll back up to that in a moment. Um, but the cost in terms of the stonework that's proposed to be done is you have that, um, in your packet there is ten thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars from the stone guy to do that work. Um, unfortunately, the quote for the bid to replace the lettering, um, came in after the application, uh, was submitted. Uh, that cost is two thousand, uh, nine hundred dollars. Um, although it's not part of the application, um, if you would consider, it would be appreciated if you would be able to, uh, contribute towards the cost of replacing, uh, the lettering as well. Um, and if you cannot because, um, the grant application was already submitted, I understand that as well. Um, so with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
This is Laura, so I have no questions, okay? Just once again, I just wanted to note that this is, as Mark, you know, you've been around with this program since the beginning or whatever. This is exactly kind of the kind of project that the, uh, uh, the funds were, were anticipating. So thanks for that. I'm going to have to think about the extra twenty-nine hundred, given how in the past we've had to set some firm rules.
Right, and, uh, and I understand that, that's why I said I understand. And Supervisor Olson, um, we would not ask for the full twenty-nine hundred. Whatever part of that you were comfortable with would be much appreciated. But I would tell you, I, I do not expect the full twenty-nine hundred to be funded by you.
Thank you.
I don't have any just some questions. Thank you for the information, if you're willing to take your heart.
No questions, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, and anything else, Leanne, regarding the, for the memorial?
No, I will be back in the next, um, couple of weeks with the presentation then on the next steps. And again, auditor's office will be here next week for the amount that's available.
Okay, great, thank you. Then we will go to public forum number two. There's comments, uh, from the public, not on the agenda. We will not take any action on the comments, do your calls if it means wrong, but may do so in the future. So I will open public forum number two and ask if there's anybody on the public comments. You may, um, unused yourself or raise hand or to start on if you're on the phone. Seeing nobody, I will close public forum number two. Go on to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates, and announcements from the supervisors. Who'd like to start? Uh, well, okay, so I do want to let you know on the agenda item that, uh, I'll be submitting next week. And it's just a request for the Story County Hunger Collaboration for, uh, a small grant, I believe it's two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, that pay their first year dues into the Iowa Hunger Collaboration. Okay, so, uh, so, uh, this, today, this afternoon, we're at the Story County Housing Trust Fund meeting. Uh, they had asked if I could get some information to figure out kind of what was happening with the, uh, housing study. So Leanne, I'll give you a quick call or check in with you, I start at two. I'll just, I just want to get a couple ideas from you, okay? Uh, then tonight is, uh, there's Central Iowa Regional Housing Authority. That's, uh, nothing on that agenda. Uh, we've got CCMT tomorrow, on Thursday. I have the Central Iowa Regional Transportation Planning Alliance. We have nothing, uh, that I saw right out the way that was going to be earth-shattering or really for us. And that one also is usually attended by Darren also at the joint meeting of the Policy and the Technical Committee. Um, we have the jurisdictional on Thursday night. And then I believe on good until next Tuesday, okay?
So this week's my little bit lighter week compared to last week, I had this jam packed hallway ride. So last night I had the Boos Together for Children Board meeting. And one of the things they went over is their end-of-year report that, that, or end-of-this-year report or end-of-report that, um, is going to be, um, submitted. Uh, I do have, I see on the Art of Story County Board of Directors that I have a meeting for that tonight. I see CMT tomorrow. Uh, AG Resources is having their board meeting on Thursday. So look at the first meeting, they're actually doing it by Zoom versus in-person. Um, uh, last, I think the last one was actually by phone call. I think they found that it was a little bit harder to hear, um, figuring out who was, um, uh, making motions for not to deceive materials. Uh, so I have that going on. I have some plan on Saturday to attend the Miracle Field dedication. And I know they're asking for small groups. And so I believe I will stop in for eleven AM group that I will be, uh, attending on that. And then on Monday, the twenty-first, the Children's Month of Health Advisors will be meeting, uh, later Monday afternoon.
Okay, at a conservation board meeting last night, um, and today, there will be a Test Story County Test Iowa, uh, House Force meeting. I think things have gone all pretty well there. CCMT Wednesday, Thursday morning, Storycom. Thursday evening jurisdictional executives and Miracle Park dedication on Saturday. And Monday. And then we're back here next Tuesday. So, several meetings this week. And first of all.
I'm sorry, you kind of skipped over the, um, upcoming agenda items. So, I just wanted to say that if you, the designated area for agendas, um, is the wall, and if the board wants to move it to the window, then we need to, uh, work this out that, that would be.
We're going to need a, oh, wow, this is a difficult one. I guess it's a decision-making one, so do we need to put it on agenda? And yet we need to post that agenda and have then a special meeting? Is that what you're, you know, kind of saying?
I'm, I'm not saying a special meeting, I'm just saying how to get agenda for next week.
Well, yes, we, I definitely do. I'll be, I know I will be speaking with our county attorney's office at, this afternoon. I've got some, I've got commitments until late this afternoon. But I do want to follow up on this and just exactly where halfway stood on this as far as the postings and who's, you know, and responsibility of that when we closed the building. So thanks, but thank you for noticing any of that. I guess I didn't know we needed to give direction. We just, I just assumed the law would be followed, but, okay. If Supervisor Olson feels like we need to take formal action, we could put it on the agenda for next week. However, I would have absolutely no problem with you, out of an abundance of caution, putting one on the glass as well as putting one where you want it. That's up to you. Yeah. Yeah, I'm just saying if you want to do it, well, you know, I'm, Supervisor Olson has said she thinks that's an official agenda item. I, I'm, I don't know that it does.
Right, I, I think the question keep, if I understood Shelley clearly, is her stating that the bulletin board was the official designation, that the board needs to make a determination, an alternative one, when that can't be utilized. And so that, that would probably need to be on a board agenda to have an alternative placement for.
We have, that's my issue. That's, Shelley, part of why I can't give you the answer right now here is that there have been times when things have been posted on the glass in the past. So I don't, I personally, over my four years here, plus the many years I've covered the board, I don't know exactly where the official responsibility had lied all this time with twenty-one point four. I just assumed the auditor's office was doing the appropriate for that. And I do believe that there are some people who have been posting on the glass and some people haven't been. So I hear this, can I talk to, uh, I'm going to talk to our county attorney's office first here. But if we could put it, if we put it on the agenda, we can always pull it off. I hear what Lynn is saying too, but I'm not even sure who's responsible for seeing that it should have been done and who's been doing it for the past four years of it. Well, let's just figure out how to go forward rather than to, you know, say who should have been whatever. Let's just figure out how to go forward. Well, I think that, that ties in to what Shelley was asking, is that saying we put it up. Let's put it on the agenda then. Um, you want me to put it on the agenda, I can do that, sure. That would be Shelley's goal of everybody's on notice at the same time here. But we don't even know who hasn't been, I mean, like. What is what?
It's in the Iowa State that it's supposed to be in a determined area where everyone can see it. Yeah, I guess we can have a discussion.
Yeah, let's, let's just do that, have a discussion next week. If I'm putting it on the agenda, why don't I talk to Ethan about it? I want to talk to Ethan too, because then I have to make my decisions that I feel I need to do ethically. I mean, we had talked about ethics earlier today. Ethically, I'm concerned about responsibilities and notifications, you know, to other authorities. That's fine, that's fine, I'll make sure it gets on the agenda. Thank you, Shelley, I appreciate, I appreciate that. Is there anything else? Yeah. If not, I'd entertain motion for adjournment. Don't move. Second, seventh, I, Olson, at American, I, where is your?
Second, heavens, I Olson at American, uh, version.